Sorry, let's call the meeting order.
I'll be back.
The Thursday, January 18th, 2024 school committee meeting. We start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice as a whole. Thank you. I'd first like to recognize Westwood Media, which is live streaming the meeting and also recording the meeting for viewing on other platforms. Anyone else looking to record today's meeting? Seeing none, I'll turn it over to the superintendent for his report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Happy to introduce tonight, just to start off as part of the superintendent's report, I want to thank Vinny Cordell, who had worked as our Food Services Director in the district for a number of years. But Vinny left the district earlier this year. We went out to hire a new Food Service Director. So I'd like to introduce Mr. Mike Demassio. Mike, if you want to join us down here at the, just as you're coming down, I'll read a little bit about Mike. Mike has been working as the Director of Dining Services at Woodstock Academy in Connecticut since 2019. Previously, he was the Director of Dining Services at Newton Country Day School for several years. And prior to his work in schools, he was the Food Service Director in Corporate Environments, working at Fidelity and at Reebok for 14 years. Mike enjoys cooking in his own restaurant, and his depth and breadth of experience in developing menus would be a huge asset for the Westwood Schools. And Mike will be starting with us officially on January 29th. So thank you for being here tonight.
Thanks.
If you just want to say a couple of brief words, so.
Thank you very much. I look forward to meeting everybody throughout my time here. I thank you to Lemon for giving me this opportunity, and I'm looking forward to the challenge of joining the Westwood School District. This is a new thing for me, doing K through 12, so I'm excited to take it on.
Thank you, Mike. And again, we were very impressed during the interview process, happy to have your expertise coming here to the district.
Excellent.
And I also want to give a thank to all the people that were part of the search process. I don't know, Lemon, if you have the names off the top of your.
Yes, we had a parent caraple de day from the Deerfield School who participated in the search process, as well as Mike Redmond, Principal of Thurston. Yeah.
So thank you so much for being here, Mike, and welcome to Westwood.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thanks, welcome.
Thank you.
So normally, the superintendent's report has a little more heft to it, but since I'll be talking nonstop during the budget presentation to this evening, I'll defer most of what I have to say to that point. I do want to take a moment, and Allison unfortunately had to step out briefly to attend to something, but you have in your pack tonight the proposed calendar for professional development days. This is the early release Wednesdays and other professional development days for next year. And we will post this on the website unless there's significant feedback from the committee this evening. We've certainly heard the feedback from the community around the frequency and timing of how we've scheduled these days. I'll actually talk a little bit in the budget presentation about one of the things that we were able to do in the budget process that allows us to expand common planning time for elementary teachers. One of the things that early release days can do is to help offset the lack of common planning time. And so in next year's calendar, we've been able to reduce the number of days from 22 to 19. That's again, we've heard that concern from the community. We've also heard the concern about how they were sort of front-loaded this year, as well as how it limited the number of full weeks. And so we brought a more natural rhythm to the way that we're doing early releases next year. We also maintained that early release day on the Friday just before the winter break. It's just sort of a good day for, I think, everybody to be able to do that. And so I hope that this calendar, getting this out early, can help with planning purposes. And again, I think is responsive to the needs and also our needs as a district to make sure that we maintain the integrity of the professional development we do with staff on those release days. One of the things that I've been impressed with since coming here over the last almost seven months now is the level of professionalism and quality of our staff, and that's a direct result of the investment that we make in them and the time that we dedicate to working with them. And the benefit to that is the learning opportunities that our students have. So I think this is a good way to strike the balance moving forward, but I'm happy to entertain any feedback that the committee has on that calendar.
Any comments or feedback? I guess my only feedback, and if there's nothing you can do, that's fine. Just October, you've got a holiday on the 3rd, a holiday on the 14th, and then professional development day is that week. So I don't know, that was just the only one.
Yeah.
Maybe there's nothing you can do, but that was the one, that was the only thing that really struck me.
Yeah, it's funny, it's one of these things, right? Because the feedback we got this year was we staggered them away from the holidays, and then we got the concern that there was never a full regular week at school.
Yeah.
Right? So it's sort of a, you've got to kind of do it one way or the other.
Yeah.
So our thought for next year is to try it this way.
Okay.
See if this works better, and then we can make a decision going forward.
You hear complaints on the other side.
Yeah, yeah, and we may, right?
Okay, that was it.
But this is, yeah.
Fair enough.
Also not terrible to have a half-day before a holiday either. It's not, it's not too bad. Looks good.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it. And thank you to Allison for doing the hard work on this as well, too.
Okay.
And that's it for the superintendent's report. Again, you'll hear a lot from me in a little bit here, so.
Great. We'll move on to public participation. Public participation is an opportunity for members of the community to give feedback to the school committee. Per our policy, you have up to three minutes. If you're interested in participating, just come up here, state your name and address. Per our policy, we don't respond directly to comments. I'd like to introduce, see if anyone would like to participate today in public participation. Seeing none, we will move on to school committee updates and reports. As far as my, I don't have a lot really yet much to report today. So we did have, I will just say, Doy and I did, we did have a roundtable back last week, yeah. Well, yeah, we had, you know, small but intimate group, you know, just I think a broad range of conversation across all levels. It was just a gate, I just reinforced, I think, for members of the community. We'll have another one in March. That one will be in the evening, date to be determined, but if people want to, the great forums, I think everyone that comes to them really enjoys them, the chance to really interact with and appreciates the opportunity to be interactive. So that's all on that. Other updates from anyone?
I have an update on the Pine Hill project. So the good news is we got our temporary certificate of occupancy, which is great. There are certain things you need to do in order to get the final one, but so that is really great. We have had a little bit of a setback. When the winter storm hit Westwood on December 18th, I'm sure you guys remember this, and a lot of the power in the town got knocked out, particularly in the Hanlon area. So Pine Hill lost power, and our emergency generator kicked on beautifully, worked beautifully. It was very quiet, so that was one, that was great. That was the good news. So the bad news is whenever Source restored the power on the next day, on the 19th, we got a phase imbalance message on the compressors that's of our HVAC system. In the morning, we got one again in the evening, and just for background, we have six condensers there. Each of them contain two compressors, so 12 compressors total. Between 19, December 19th and the first week of January, I'm not quite sure when, all 12 of the compressors ended up getting ruined by this phase imbalance, and all 12 needed to be replaced. So temporary heat was restored to the building via this, these auxiliary HVAC units that are outside of the school, and they're blowing hot air, and the school is so well insulated that this is actually fine for now, but clearly not a long-term solution. And the works, but the work is able to proceed, all of the interior, the work is just going on, is normal. At this point, we think this was most likely caused not by the equipment, but because of an electrical anomaly coming in from the street, there's three-phase power coming in from the street, and we think something about the way the power was, came in off the street created this phasing imbalance. So we've got a team of experts working on this. I have no doubt we'll have a solution very soon. In the good news column, our amazing project team was able to locate and secure 12 new compressors from the manufacturer at no cost because of the warranty that's in place. All 12 arrived yesterday, and the goal is to have this HVAC system back up and ready to turn on to begin the balancing process by January 25th or 26th. If everything runs smoothly and they, they're able to cut this balancing phase in half, in half through overtime, which everyone is committed to doing, then we are still able to make the February move in date, and so that's what we're all working toward. But to make this less stressful for everybody, we had talked about having a ribbon-cutting ceremony and opening the school for community tours in early February. We are pushing that to April because we really just want to give everyone time to do what they need to do to get this school open. So they were tentatively scheduled for February 9th. We're now tentatively scheduling them for April 5th. And again, that'll be the ribbon-cutting in the morning and the community tours in the afternoon. So we are all crossing our fingers that everything goes according to plan and we have no more hiccups, but I did want to report that because it, you know, the team has been working nonstop on this for almost two weeks at this point, and, you know, kudos to our team for immediately jumping on the problem. And I mean, finding 12 compressors to have on site by yesterday is nothing short of a miracle. So very grateful to Bray Brothers, very grateful to Doron Whittier, and also to Vertex for just managing this as best we could. And meanwhile, we are working with EverSource to try and figure out how this happened, how we can prevent it. No one's ever seen anything like this, so it's a mystery, but we will solve it. So that's the news on Hanlon. I also want to say, at the next meeting, I'm going to be giving sort of an overview of the budget of the school project. At town meeting last night, we had a few towns, people get up and sort of assert that the project was over budget, and I really want to clarify that because we are not over budget, there is not, we are not, you know, the town authorized a certain amount, we are certainly not going to go beyond that amount, we might even borrow less than originally we thought. So next week, next month, I will have a whole presentation on numbers so everyone can really understand what exactly is going on.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Are there comments or?
I just wanted to thank Latifah and Donna Tobin for the excellent conversations with caregivers that took place that I attended this week. I know there was a previous session in December. It was really remarkable, and to have all of those experts in one room sharing what is happening in our classrooms was really just such a treat. So thank you for taking the time to do that, and thanks to Donna as well.
Anything else? All right, great. Well, we'll turn it over now to the superintendent for the presentation of the budget.
Thank you very much. I mentioned I was going to talk for a while, so that time begins now. And Mayor, I'm happy you didn't do the Pine Hill budget presentation tonight because that might have been a little bit of overkill this evening.
A lot of numbers.
Yeah, exactly. So, you know, this is broken into a few different sections, and so I just want to start by asking how we built, or by addressing the question, how we built the proposed FY25 budget. And to begin, I just want to hearken back to the conversation we had at this table back in October. We shared at that point that our budget priorities were going to be informed by our district goals and strategic priorities that were approved by this committee back in September. We had highlighted the priority at that point about hiring a human resources director, which was also supported and corroborated by the findings from the equity audit. There were the findings of my entry plan, which then came out in November, and then other priorities identified by the committee. Thank you, Harvey. On top of that, we also shared that our annual budget drivers included meeting contractual obligations, other inflation costs, maintaining class sizes, addressing special education needs. And again, the budget is the story of what we value and what we believe and what our progress is. And so how do we, how do we continue to make progress on the educated, on the educational goals articulated in our strategy for improvement? So the entry plan that I put forth in November identified those significant strengths about high levels of student achievement, high-quality teaching, administrative support staff, robust levels of community support. So given that, this budget is not designed to be a major overhaul of something that is working really well for students and families in this district. So we needed to start by identifying what the financial resources were to maintain that existing educational and personal infrastructure, and then figure out how we made strategic additions and reductions that are aligned with our goals and priorities. Just as, and this is not a new slide, I think, to anybody here, I presented a very similar slide in my previous experience in a previous district, but by its nature, education is a people business. Eighty-five percent of our budget is salaries, 70% of that salaries budget is teachers, and you can't have high-quality learning opportunities for students unless you have high-quality human beings working with those students. And so we start with that as sort of a baseline part about the FY25 budget. Just to kind of jump to the end of the process and where we wind up, because people that are going to be watching this want to know where are we landing. So I'm going to start with where we're landing, and then I'll talk about sort of how we got to where we're landing. So our biggest cost driver are those contractual salary obligations. This is a lot different process than last year because last year we had the uncertainty of where we were with contract negotiations. Contracts are settled through the end of FY25, with the exception of one contract for custodians, and that will be in process. But we have much greater clarity because the major bulk of those cost drivers are cost certain at this point in time. We do have cost escalation in other areas, particularly transportation and special education. And I want to flag in special education, it's both non-salary in the area of tuition and transportation, and salary for nondiscretionary service additions because we need to be responsive to what we're legally and morally required to do that's part of students' individualized education plans. So the financial impact of a level services budget, accounting for the contractual salary obligations, accounting for cost escalation, and accounting for special education requirements, is a 3.77% increase over FY24. In terms of our budget request for FY25, we're looking at a 3.69% increase over FY24, which is a number that's actually below the level services percentage of 3.77. And that's more increase, that's consistent, as you'll see on the next slide, more consistent with what our typical budget growth rates have been. And what's really important in this process is this budget will allow us to make significant programmatic changes, consistent with our strategic priorities, but also maintaining our responsibility to the community to have, to be fiscal stewards of the tax dollars within the community. And so the recommended budget for FY25 is $56,763,603. This shows you sort of graphically what those percentage increases have looked like over the last two years. The first two years on the far left, those were the university station years, so there was obviously a big, major influx in new growth during that period of time. Last year, I think the story of last year was unique a whole lot of different ways, but this FY25 asks returns us back to sort of what our historical spending patterns have been based upon previous years. So this shows you the same number, but how we sort of get there. So we have a little over $1.8 million increase in salaries for existing personnel. I'll talk about some savings that we're able to actualize through the Pine Hill consolidation. It's a net reduction of, and some of these are both direct and indirect savings, of 4.0 FTEs to the savings of $268,000. It allows us to make some other staffing changes that I'll talk about, of 4.7 FTE to a little over $350,000. And then we have some of those other inflationary costs. This is what's in the operating budget. Just for clarity about, this is the total budget request in major categories, again, in the operating budget. You'll see those same numbers. The major driver is salaries, with a little bit in special education. We actually are able to increase some offset utilities to actually see a minor reduction in the operating budget for utilities and other non-salarious increases. And then this is what it looks like if you look at all funds, not just what's in the operating budget, but you account for the offsets as well, too. It's a similar pattern that you see here. So we, to talk about how we got to that number, we're going to start first by talking about enrollment considerations, right? Not only is education a people business on the staff side, it's a people business on the student side, and so we need to be responsive to what our enrollment patterns are in the schools. So we don't see any significant change in the coming year in high school or middle school enrollment. I didn't bother to put the slide up with the graph, you can see it, the enrollment graph, you can see it in the budget documents, these will be public tomorrow morning, but you don't see a major change there. It doesn't necessitate a major staffing change related to that at the high school or middle school level. But we do need to look carefully at elementary enrollment, particularly given the consolidation of Pine Hill. We have seen elementary enrollment in the district rise since its low point in FY21. We've gone up by 72 students in just the last two years alone. And we also, as I've shown on the next slide, have had some challenges with our use of census data to accurately predict what we're looking at for incoming kindergarten students because the year we're currently in provided the dramatic break in what our previous trends were. And so this chart, which you have seen in previous iterations of the budget, in the four previous fiscal years, there was about a 20, maybe, there was one year was a little bit higher, but about a 20-student difference between what we saw in the census and what we saw for incoming kindergarten enrollment in the fall. This year, that number was almost 70, right? And that's a major, dramatic difference. We had to make a post-budget adjustment in this year's budget where we, because we actually had some declining enrollment in the 5th grade at Deerfield, we were able to move a classroom teacher from Deerfield, move that position to create a new kindergarten section, Martha Jones. But we don't want to be caught flat-footed and having to make post-budget additions in next year's budget. And so because that trend has been broken, we want to proceed conservatively in how we estimate kindergarten enrollment for next year. We're going to assume that FY25 kindergarten enrollment is the same as FY24. And then we use that along with the guidelines that have been established by this committee around class sizes of 18 to 22 in grades 2 and 3, 18 to 24 in grades 4 to 5, to identify how many classroom sections we need. And you'll see on the next slide that our projected enrollment for FY25 at the elementary level shows no overall district net change in elementary classroom sections. There will be a shift of one section from Downey to Martha Jones due to an increased higher 5th grade class leaving and a larger kindergarten class coming in. But these are what these numbers look like, what you see in parentheses here are how many sections in each grade level. I do want to pause on the slide and identify what in the world the 2.5 at Downey means because that looks a little bit different. What we've had for a number of years at Downey is we've actually had a split K-1 classroom. There is a, the staff member who's in that position is doing it phenomenally, but in an ideal world, we would not have to split a K-1 classroom. We have done it because the numbers have fallen just wrong for the last few years. And so the first thing we would do is if we saw a decline in enrollment, an actualized enrollment for kindergarten students, is we would remove that K-1 classroom and allocate three grades, three classrooms in grade 1. That's a priority if we're able to do that from a budgetary perspective at Downey for next year. But you can see on the bottom of the page what we have for what the enrollment is in each of our buildings for next year, how many sections we have. And one thing I should note particularly related to Pine Hill is that we currently have two sections of each class of each grade at both Deerfield and Hanlon, with the exception of grade 5 at Deerfield that only has one. So while we had talked about as a, as a community in previous budget cycles that we might see a reduction in classroom positions with the opening of Pine Hill and the consolidation, the enrollment on the ground, because it's increased, does not allow us to do that. So we've had to look for those savings in other areas. And so I'm going to go into that Pine Hill consolidation, and we'll talk about elementary specials as part of this as well, too. By the way, I'm going to pause here for a second, Tony, because I don't, I'm going to talk for like the next long time. If you'd rather pause and let the committee ask questions on the way at the end of each section, I'm happy to do that as well, considering this is our first time doing this together, so.
Let's say, keep going unless somebody.
Well, I have a question, just on the previous slide.
Sure.
So these are the numbers we've come up with. How is that different from the census?
Yeah, so right now, there's, we'll be looking at roughly that same sort of 70-student gap that we saw this year, is the assumption that we're making. If we revert back to previous trends, the first thing we would do is the Downey piece that I talked about. The other thing that we would do is we would need to have a conversation, a committee at that point, about do we invest that in some other staffing needs? Well, I'll talk about a list of other budget priorities later. Or do we identify that as contingency funds for unanticipated expenses? Do we invest that as a one-time expense into some other, you know, capital or one-time need? That would be a wonderful problem to have, but I don't want to be caught short-footed when it comes to putting teachers in front of kids.
Okay, so this sort of overestimates the census again by roughly 70 kids?
Yeah, it overestimates the census by the same differential we saw in this year's actuals.
Okay, so 50.
I mean, if we're typically seeing 20 and we're caught with 70, we're, we're.
We're okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, since we're, can go back to that side, I just, since we're on the topic to Mayor's point around Pine Hill, I think it's just important for the community to understand that we're, when we went to the town, there were people in the community who said we were building too big a school by 20 to 25%. We're actually, we have 25 classrooms, 23 are going to be full next year, so. For the historic record. Anyway, I'll leave it at that.
So with that being said, I'll move on to the next section. I'll move on to Pine Hill consolidation, elementary special. So as I had just talked about, right, a significant factor in developing this budget was cost savings realized through that consolidation. I just talked about not being able to actualize the classroom enrollment productions, but we did find cost savings in administrative costs, some strategic programming redesign with a net reduction of 4 FTE and $268,000 in savings. So this is a, just an itemized list. I'm not going to pause on this slide too long because I'll talk about each of these in a little more detail momentarily, but this shows you the net effect of that consolidation. So in terms of administrative cost savings, we currently have a principal and assistant principal, and part of that is we have two buildings, it's also a much larger, a much larger building we're going into, but we will be reducing that position from a 12-month position to a 10-month position. That being said, the need for an assistant principal in a school that's 438 students for next year, when you have that, you have additional staff that you need to supervise, you need to evaluate. You have additional numbers of IP meetings and 504 meetings. The piece with that is really, really significant, but we're able to do this during the summer months, you don't have the scheduling implications that you have at the middle school and high school level. We will be reducing a .2 FTE department head in special education because we are consolidating the location of programs that allows us to be a little more efficiency, allows us to be a little more efficient with how we're utilizing that personnel, and we will be going down to one administrative assistant where we have one each in Deerfield and Hanlon right now. To support that building, there is a member of our central office team that will be moving to the new building to support special ed functions there. So there will be two bodies, but from a building-based budgetary perspective, we'll be reducing one. There are some other programmatic consolidation savings. We have a 1.0 building-based sub at the elementary schools that has been unfilled throughout the course of this year. The intention was it was dedicated to specialized programming, but because we're, that position was unfilled, we're also consolidating Hanlon and Deerfield that each have one right now. We'll be maintaining the staffing that currently exists, but not looking to fill essentially the position that has gone unfilled throughout the course of this year. It was also on our radar from the beginning. We had created a one-year SLPA position, Speech Language Pathologist Assistant, that that position will be going away as part of next year's budget. We're also looking to redesign our mental health supports to be more proactive and less reactive, and so we're going to be taking a psychologist position and converting that to an adjustment counselor position so that we would maintain one psychologist in each of our elementary schools. In Sheehan, MJ, and Downey, there is a .4 FTE adjustment counselor. At Pine Hill, there will be a 1.0, that person may be able to help out in some other areas. But one way to look at this, if you look at combined psychologist and adjustment counselor positions, you've got 1.4 each at Sheehan, MJ, and Downey. Pine Hill is roughly 50% larger, and you've got a 2.0, which is roughly 50% more, right? So if you're looking at like a support staff to mental health, or a mental health support staff to student ratio, they're comparable. So I want to take a few minutes to talk about elementary specials as well, too. So this has been on the radar as part of a strategic priority going back to 2021. You know, and when I look back at the, even our own internal analysis in the 21-22 school year, this was identified as a priority. It was tabled due to ongoing curriculum reviews and budgetary impact. I know when I transitioned into the district last May and met with members of the admin team, we had a conversation then about this is something that's been on our radar, we haven't been able to do. So the consolidation provides an opportunity for us to look at the structure of elementary specialist offerings. Our digital literacy computer science review is basically done-ish and will be presented in February, but as part of that final report, there is a need to expand digital literacy computer science offerings in elementary school. Right now, it only exists in grade 3 as a coding, a part once a week in grade 3, but the scope of what is done in DLCS is significantly greater than just coding, and so there is a need to expand that. At the same time, we also need to continue our commitment to providing high-quality instruction, visual arts, performing arts, library, and physical education, which is part of the core offerings for students across the district right now. And so what we're doing with this, I'm going to show and contrast, this is our current elementary specialist offerings. Students right now, one day a week, have art, music, library, and phys ed, and then they have a second special that's different depending upon what grade level they're in. So they have a second phys ed in kindergarten. In first grade, it's half the year art, half the year phys ed. Second grade is a second art. Third grade is DLCS, which is primarily coding this year in grade 3. Grade 4 is instrumental music, all students have to take an instrument, and grade 5 is chorus and drama. So the proposed changes here is that we would be bringing DLCS as an opportunity for a special, once a week, for every child in grades 2 through 5. And so you can see those changes that we're doing on this chart here. The things that are changed are highlighted in the, I'm not even sure what color that The things that are changed are highlighted in the, I'm not even sure what color that is. But, but in that color. Tope, is that the?
Yeah, I think it's taupe.
Taupe, sure. So you can see the DLCS coming in in grades two through five, so that replaces a second art in grade two. I'll talk about the impact on instrumental music and chorus and drama in a second. In grade one, when we had a conversation around what do kids need more, we identified the need for kids to have physical activity at those young ages. Our existing structure, I think, was more of a product of existing personnel than it was about philosophical underpinnings. And so we're putting a second PE in grade one. In terms of grade four and grade five, what we're doing as part of this in grade four is that we are going to give students and families a choice around music. We'll be asking this spring to identify if students want to take an instrument or do they want to take a general music class? So this allows us to continue to, to provide instrumental music offerings for kids. I'm hoping that down the road, this will also allow us to expand into strings offerings in fourth grade, which is not currently part of our elementary offerings. But our way to be able to do that. And so there's a choice between instrumental music and general music. One of the ways that we're able to accomplish that, I'll talk about in a moment. In grade five, we'd be pushing chorus and drama in instead of the general music, so we would maintain that. At the same time, there would be no change in the current structure for how we do instrumental music in grade five. That would still be the pull-up model that exists right now. So I've, I think everything I just said is probably here on this slide. So I don't think I necessarily need to repeat it. And so I'll just, I'll just say that. In addition to these programmatic changes to specials, there is also a significant increase, and I alluded to this in our conversation around the calendar. There's a significant increase in common preparation time for elementary classroom teachers. So I, I can't tell you exactly how much it is right now, because I, I don't know. Because schedules are kind of all over the place, but this is an increase where every grade level in every building will have a minimum of three times a week of common preparation. And every day in grades four and five, where the content demands are significantly greater. This is one of the ways that we're able to make the instrumental music choice works. What we do not want to do, right now, kids travel with their classroom to specials. And what we don't want to do, because there's all kinds of issues with selection biases, put all of the band kids in one class and all of the non-band kids in another class. We want to be able to have, you know, the, the mixed, mixed student groups that we would have in a normal setting and make decisions about what's best for kids. But because every fourth and fifth grade class will have special at the same time, we can mix and match student groups for specials. And so the kids that may be taking band, you might have, you know, seven pulled from this classroom and six pulled from this classroom and 10 pulled from this classroom. And a different group would travel to phys ed at the same time and a different group might travel to art at the same time. However, that works in the building. And this is also provides a bridge to students being able to get a little more experience outside of their classroom as we think about transition to middle school down the road. So there's some extra benefits to that as well, too. One final thing I'll mention about this, we're also, we are able to do most of this right now, but not all of it. And that's our internal staff providing weekly music, physical education, and library instruction for students in the preschool. Right now, because of scheduling, we have to contract out music in the preschool. We won't have to do that going forward next year. So these changes, which are strategic and programmatic in nature, also come with a net savings in the FY '25 budget. So we do need to add an instructional technology coach. So it's a 1.0 ITC. But we would also be reducing a 1.0 music teacher and a .8 art teacher, but while maintaining that weekly music and art experience for children in every grade K through five. So I'm going to pause here for a second before I move to the next section, just to get questions or comments from the committee. And if there are none, I'll keep going ahead.
Tim, have we seen, do we have peer schools that have done a model like this? And what's, what's worked or what's been challenging about that?
Yeah, it's, what I would say is I have, I'm not aware of direct peers that do it this way, because it is such an opaque process in just about every school district. I think as we move through the implementation phase, we'll be seeking out some peers just to kind of work to smooth out some of those pieces. I think our ability to put DLCS, there are some districts that are starting to do that more, but this will put us sort of at the forefront of that. And this is, the same conversation we had earlier this fall about our work around AI, right? There is a natural link between expanding the opportunities there and thinking about what the impact of that is on, on future educational needs. You know, I have talked with some colleagues in other districts that, that do, I, I think the word that I've heard is clustering, where they will, or swarming sometimes, where you will bring instrumental teachers into the same building at the same time. But it's not necessarily always aligned with the way that specialists are working. Again, because we have the, the opportunity that we've been able to create through this process of creating that consistent daily common planning, common preparation time, provides a different vehicle for us to be able to do this that isn't necessarily available in every community.
So, I mean, I can, Allison and I have been on the DLCS curriculum review. So I mean, we did a survey. It was extensive. There were a lot of feedback from students, from parents, and from educators. And I know you'll go into that next month, so I won't, I won't steal your, your thunder. But I can see why, you know, that choice was made based upon, you know, all the feedback that we heard over the last, gosh, almost a year of discussing this. So I think that's, that will be of good value. I think it'll meet a need that, that people are craving. I have a question. What does the common planning time look like now? What's the add? Like, what's the differential?
So right now, every teacher has a preparation period every day. That's contractual, and that's when their kids go to special. I, I don't, I'm kind of looking out to our, our elementary folks out here in the audience. And if you just want to show me like a set of fingers for how many common preparation periods your teachers may have in a.
I would say two to three.
Two to three? And so, you know, the add, and what I would say is based upon the complexities of each building, some, when we talk about every day in four and five, we are able to do that in some other grades and some other buildings as well, too. But to guarantee at least three in every grade level is, is a win, so. Thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you. Tim, for the community, would you mind sharing some examples of what DLCS would look like?
So I'm going to defer to, I don't know if Allison or Steve wants to take that one.
Yeah, I, I think Steve's probably our, our best bet. But, you know, I think we're, we've got lots of fun things. We're excited about that.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
You might just come up just to, so they can hear you at home, too, so.
It's, it really encompasses a real range. It's, um, it's a little bit of AI, which actually isn't in the standards that were published, I think, in 2016. It's about collaborating online, producing digital artifacts. I think a big part of it is responsible use. It's also, in this day and age, with so much information coming at kids, it's also about vetting information and making sense of it, determining, you know, what's fact, what's fiction, that kind of thing. And it's just, when I think about when I started compared, you know, 13 years ago compared to now, the, the need is just so significant. And I, I think this is just a, a great opportunity to provide, especially our youngest kids, with those skills, those guardrails, so that when they get older, they're more equipped to thrive in this environment where it's ubiquitous, it's on all the time, and that's really kind of a little sense of it. But we'll definitely get into it more next month.
I think I'd add just two things. One is the second grade in particular, we're really thinking about kind of ramping up toward kids doing more work, you know, getting ready for third grade. I think that sounds a little bit crazy, but, but just there are all these sort of small skills about how do you navigate this machine? And right now, our ITCs are doing that through a lot of push into classroom time. This would sort of pull out and create a really dedicated spot for them to do that, which allows us to do other things in the classroom time. So that's, that's a win for everybody. And then with fifth grade, we've talked a lot about the kind of transition from five to six and really digging in to kind of work on that citizenship component. You know, you're, you have this powerful thing and you're going to get to the middle school and all sorts of things are going to occur to you in terms of how to use it. We want you to make right decisions. And so how do we kind of help build in a program for that, too?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm really excited about dropping the instrument requirement. Having gone through that with my own child, it was a little mind-boggling to me. So I think a lot of families will appreciate the autonomy that they have to decide what they'd like to do with the instruments that their children may or may not be interested in playing.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that comment, right? And, and I think if we go back to the strategic plan, right, we talk about increasing student choice. And so this is a direct response to that goal of increasing student. And, and students are not making that choice independently without their parents in fourth grade, right? So increasing student family choice at that grade level, but that's consistent with that part of the plan. So I appreciate you saying that. All right, so we'll move on to other staffing changes. And so this list is more adds than reductions that we saw in the last list. Again, I'll just put this up here for a moment to kind of flag it, and I'll break these out into different sections as well, too. So the first part, to continue our conversation around technology, you saw that we added a 1.0 FTE and instructional technology coach at the elementary level. There is a commensurate reduction in .5 at the middle school level. We had taken half of an FTE last year. Excuse me, in the budget. As we look at what the needs are there, we'll be replacing that with the establishment of four middle school technology facilitator stipends. And so it replaces that standalone ITC position with stipends for technology team leaders, one in each grade level, one in the arts. And there's a benefit in having that grade level peers with knowledge of the grade level curriculum working with their peers. One person working half-time to support all the teachers in the middle school level, we found was not necessarily the most effective model for doing that. And so this provides a greater peer-to-peer interaction on that front. Yeah, please.
Add in a piece of that, it actually, it's sort of a little bit more parallel to what we've done at the high school, where we've got a person that's a teacher who's also, so they have classroom-based experience. They're kind of doing all the things that teachers do and then also helping teachers. And I, I think the power of that is really because they're in it, you know, they're in the weeds themselves with assessment and grading and planning with technology. They're able to model for peers, try things out themselves, and then bring them back to the, to their colleagues. So it's a really nice model. We think it could work brilliantly at the middle school, too.
Thank you for adding that, Allison.
No problem.
The other part, and this is not related to the teaching and learning part, except in the way that it supports teaching and learning. And this is just around straight technology support. So we had a staff member who had left earlier this year. And we piloted the program at FY '24, moving to a more centralized tech support model with a ticket system. We found some success in that during this year. So we're looking to expand that in FY '25. And so we would be reducing a .6 FTE technology support specialist by reconfiguring two positions and moving to the centralized tech support model, which is essentially an on-call system as opposed to a, you know, be physically present. It's, it's pushing out from a centralized location.
So would that person sit at the district, in the district offices? Or would they rotate among the school? I mean, where physically would that person be?
So that, that person will reside here at the high school, which is great, because we have other techs here, so some shared knowledge. And it's also more centrally located to the elementary schools. So we're doing that now, and it seems to be working really well.
All right, and how much of the time can they resolve the issue locally? Or how many, how many times do they have to run out to the schools?
It varies by the day. Things can be a little quiet, or, you know, they can be bundled, depending on where the schools are. You don't really know. What we are finding is that some of the issues that teachers or staff are reporting can be resolved remotely.
Right, that was right.
Yes, and so that's actually been another efficiency that we're seeing. And we all have visibility into the tickets. So some of these issues are better resolved by, say, a network manager versus a technology support specialist. So we've, we're more efficiently deploying the people that need to solve the problems. And so I, it's been very successful. We're very happy with it.
Yeah, if I could have just had one other piece, too, that I know you and I have talked about, is moving to that ticket system also allows us to archive and look at the data of what kinds of problems we're addressing. So that if we see trends in problems that are arriving, it can then inform if we need to do additional training in a certain area, or if there's some kind of a systemic issue that we want to resolve. So that increases not just in terms of being able to solve the problem in the moment, but think about how we can proactively prevent future problems as well, too, so. Moving on to other strategic additions, I know this has been a big one for a long time. And I'm happy to put this forward as part of this year's budget is to add a human resources director. It has been a consistent priority. And again, as I mentioned before, this need was corroborated by the recent equity audit. It is even more critical in the post-pandemic work climate. People's relationship with work has changed dramatically. We have seen a large increase in staff turnover, particularly amongst support staff, because it's not just how do we recruit and hire people, it's how do we recruit, hire, and retain people? And also along with our district strategic priority of how do we recruit, hire, and develop and retain a more diverse staff that's better representative of our, of our student population. That's clearly one of our strategic priorities as well. The other thing is this role is going to have a significant focus on district communication strategy. And so that is an opportunity for, we've identified that as part of my entry plan as well, too, that we need to do more work around strategic communication, so that'll be a part of this role as well. I also, it's not on the slide, but I need to give a ton of credit for Allison, who everything sort of runs through her desk. The impact of not having this position is that it has taken away from focus on teaching and learning. Because the increased demands of human resource, and I know I've said this before as part of the conversation, but the increased demands of the HR role are detracting from our focus on teaching and learning in the district. And so by adding this, it allows us, that position to go back to what it should be, so. So some other strategic additions would be adding a 1.0 middle school library media specialist. This position was eliminated back in 2021. It has been on the list to try to bring back. And I will mention a number of these positions, as you see in the, in the budget book. When we talked about future needs, we started by saying these were things identified as future needs in last year's budget. These are things we're addressing in this year's budget. So this is a restoration of that position. It's critical to support students' informational literacy development. It goes hand in hand with a piece that Steve was just talking about, about students' ability to identify, you know, fact from fiction. That's a critical role that library media specialists play, as well as being sort of the cultural glue of schools as the, as a library when it's well-functioning does that as well, too. And that need was identified through the recent library curriculum review. There's also a strategic addition of a 1.0 bridge program teacher at the high school. This would allow for the creation of a therapeutic program that goes hand in hand with some of the other support staffing or related service provider staffing we have at the high school. It would support at-risk and high-need students, both in special education and not in special education, to reengage in school with clinical support and trauma-informed instruction across content areas. And while this is not being added specifically to decrease special ed referrals or future out-of-district placements, it is an investment that has that potential in the future, right? The more that we can develop robust quality in district programming and the more we can serve students' needs here in our schools in Westwood, the less we need to invest our resources in, in outside placements.
Can you maybe talk a little bit more? I'm particularly interested in how this maybe relates to the work Joanna does in social work.
Yeah.
Guidance, I mean, I, I'm very supportive. I just want to understand how this fits with some of the other pieces.
Yeah, so since, and I will, I will give Amy Davenport here as, as credit for being the, the brainchild here. So I will, I will turn the floor over to her.
I don't even know if I'm the brainchild, but I would give a lot of credit to the student services department for helping us to create this proposal. And actually, to Caroline Higgins from our guidance department, who's been really pursuing a program like this for years. So we have several mental health supports to answer your specific question at the high school. We have two full-time school psychologists, both of whom really provide a lot of one-on-one counseling for students who are on IEPs and have a counseling goal on that IEP. In addition to those two, we also have an adjustment counselor who's actually a school psychologist. And she provides counseling to gen ed students and students on IEPs and supports school-wide programming, in particular, the SOS screaming program that happens in the ninth and the 12th grade, as well as some small group programs that happen throughout the year. In addition to that, we have a social worker. She primarily provides counseling to general education students. And so they sort of share the counseling load for students who don't have a counseling goal or an IEP. And then they both also share the responsibility of developing and providing school-wide programming for students. A lot of this sort of educational work that Joanna, the social worker, does happens in our guidance seminars. So she's really working most closely with all students. Right now, the two of them piece together more acute supports when a student is in crisis and isn't on an IEP. If a student is on an IEP and is experiencing some kind of really intense disruption, that student might be supported by one of them or might be supported by the school psychologist that works with them regularly. And so we get into like a strange situation, because we're able to provide a lot of support to kids, but it's all piecemeal. And what that means is that a student who is experiencing a really tough time might work with three different mental health people before like the dust settles. And so being able to actually provide like a clear pathway with clear staff and a home base is something that we really haven't been able to do, even though we've been able to provide a lot of mental health supports for kids. So this request doesn't actually change like the, like add staff, but it allows us to leverage staff differently. And it allows us to pair that staffing with really purposeful academic support from a special educator. And I would say, like, even though this is the first time you're seeing this ask, you've seen like smaller versions of this ask for a very long time. Way back in like 2018, when we were asking for an, an IA to help to support students who were struggling from an acute situation, that's evolved into some academic folks peeling off parts of their FTEs to provide academic coaching for students who are struggling and working with a mental health person. And so this is really sort of like, and now we're just really hoping it's a teacher to, to kind of bring it all together. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that's great. Thank you for that. Thanks.
Awesome. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Amy. So just continuing on the list here, the, the next few ITC. So just continuing on the list here, the next few, I talked before about non-discretionary special education additions. I would put the .5 middle school SLP, the .3 middle school OT, and the two IAs as part of that list. Again, we have a legal and a moral obligation to meet the needs of services that students have on their IEPs. And the increase in middle school is due to the fact that we do have a large cohort moving from elementary to middle school as well, too. And the last thing on this list is adding stipends for SEL team leaders. Joanna, I want to thank you for mentioning the conversations with caregivers event the other night. I know a number of the members of the committee were there. And thank you as well to Latifah and Donna, the staff members that did that. This is part of our district, the SEL team leaders, the stipends here is part of our district commitment to support students' social emotional learning. We have advisory stipends that currently exist at the middle school. We don't have an analog at the elementary level. And so this expands it, knowing that the need is not just at one level, it's across the board for students. And so I'll pause. I think people, I like the model where you're asking questions along the way with slides, but I'll pause here before I move to the next section. So.
I do have a question. I think, harkening back to, sorry, the beginning part where you were talking about Pine Hill. I have actually received a couple of questions from the community, from community members about the nursing staff at Pine Hill. Can you just clarify, is anything changing there?
So nothing is changing. There are currently, there's currently a nurse position allocated at both Hanlon and Deerfield. There will be two nursing positions allocated at Pine Hill for next year. That's related to some of the acuity of needs that we're seeing. And so there's no change in that in the FY25 budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to move on to special education, non-salary budget changes and revenue assumptions. Those are a whole bunch of different things, but the sections were too small to create separate sections, so I kind of lumped them all together with one header slide there. So let's start with special education. It is the most variable part of not just our district budget, but any district budget. It's special education costs. We have the wonderful position here where because of the creation of district-wide programs, we can educate almost all of our students in district. It's less than 1% of Westwood students attend out-of-district special education placements. There's, I have not been able to find great statewide data on what that looks like in totality for all population. I can say, however, that the statewide data about percentage of students on IEPs that attend out-of-district placements, our rate is less than half of the state average, right? So that speaks to the quality of the robust programming we have in district. There was a lot of conversation, I know, here in Westwood last year, in my former district, and in every district across the state, across the Commonwealth, about the operational services division. Last year, they had put a 14% increase in out-of-district tuitions. They decided to tack on another 4.69% this year. This is after a decade or two of only 2% to 3% increases. And so that is, there is an impact on this year's budget. However, one of the saving graces we have in the FY25 budget is we are actually going to be experiencing a net decrease in tuition. That is not typical. I will say, as we think about future years, as we think about FY26, do not expect a net decrease in tuition FY26. Just to talk about the totality, right, we have an obligation to educate students that are within the Westwood Public Schools, who require services from the ages of 3 to 22, until their 22nd birthday. And so what happens is we sometimes have student movements, whether it's in and out of the district, or in and out of that age range, that can impact tuitions. And so this is an atypical year, but I, for any community members watching saying, great, the new guy came in to reduce out-of-district, this is not a trend to expect going forward. And I should say, or Sue, who's doing a great job in student services as well, too, I would, if I came up here and said that she's going to promise to reduce out-of-district tuitions every year, that's not going to happen. So I, but we can take advantage of that in FY25. We do see reduction in residential tuitions for next year. We do see an increase in day tuitions. Because of that, you'll actually see that there is an increase in transportation costs as well, too. So the net impact of this is a reduction of $196,000 in special ed tuitions, an increase of $252,000 in special education transportation. That's a combined out-of-district and in-district. I noticed the typo on there, by the way. That should be 117, 342, not some random number that has seven, that is not a seven-digit increase in special ed transportation. So I'll fix that before this goes public. But relative to what we see in most years, the net combined impact of tuition and transportation in special education is less than it is typically. So the, combining that with the fact that we are seeing a little bit of a decrease in our circuit breaker offset for FY25, because the FY24 receipts are down a little bit from FY23 receipts, the net increase in the budget is $85,000 and change for FY25. We also have an increase in yellow bus transportation. We're in the third year of our contract with Connolly Bus. That's a $42,000 increase in yellow bus transportation. There's just a natural increase in professional development providers of $8,000 in this year's budget. It's partially related to cost escalation, partially to some contractual provisions. And we are going to see a decrease in the operating ask for electricity due to an increase in an offset from a solar agreement we have with a solar farm in Woburn of $25,000. So speaking of that, revenue assumptions, oh, sorry, go ahead.
The $25,000 electricity, are we going to add to that when, did we factor in at all the panels on the Pine Hill?
We've not. So this does not assume any revenue or like savings in our electric bills from the Pine Hill array when it goes live. Our indication is that even if it's connected in September on schedule, ever so, sometimes delays when we can start to see those revenues and when it's really turned on. So we didn't want to rely on that. So we would reflect that in FY26.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would say, just speaking sort of generally around utilities, right, to, because I would anticipate that a question that we're going to get asked was Pine Hill was obviously built with a lot of energy conservation measures in place. So if you've done that, why aren't you seeing a decrease in utility costs? It is a bigger building. And certainly from my experience and from others' experience, there is more technology in that building. And so while it is more efficient, you're also drawing more electricity related to it. So we're not budgeting either way for FY25 related to utility costs. We want to get a year of actuals, or at least most of the year of actuals under our belt, and so that we can better inform how we do this for FY26 and going forward.
Okay.
Can I have a circuit breaker question unless you're ready?
Yeah, no, absolutely. So, yeah, so if you want to ask the question now, then I can.
Well, so we, I thank you for talking to me a little bit about circuit breaker earlier this week. I know that it's paid in arrears. Our receipts were lower in FY24, so therefore, we're going to collect less in FY25. And would we assume then in FY26 we're collecting even less?
Yeah, so.
Because the receipts will be down again?
Yeah, so to be, and Lema, correct me if I'm wrong with any of this, right? Nothing like me making sure I have the explanation right live on camera.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
No, because it is a complicated thing, right? So what we do here in budgeting is that we do not budget what we're receiving in FY25 in the FY25 budget. We budget what we received in FY24 in the FY25 budget.
That's true.
That's good. I got that right.
You got that right.
And so our FY24 receipts, which we know, because we're in the course of this year, and that's paid in quarterly payments, is based upon FY23 expenditures. Looking forward, when we build FY26, that will be based upon the receipts that we receive next year, which are based upon this year's expenditures.
Got it.
Now, the hope and expectation, although we need to work through this, if you recall in last year's budget cycle, there was a significant increase in out-of-district tuitions. How that plays out in actual, we'll be making those claims this year for next year's receipts, which will impact FY26's budget. So there's a, I mean, you're essentially working over multiple fiscal years simultaneously. So we'll know more after we get the first claims in, you know, in the fall of next year for what the FY26 offsets will look like. But that's why, even though you saw last year's out-of-district tuition budget go up considerably, that doesn't hit the way we budget FY25. It hits the way we budget FY26.
Got it. Thank you.
I have a follow-up question. I remember hearing or seeing at some point that there could be a change to the percentage of the circuit breaker. Did that go through? I don't, I couldn't find it anywhere.
So I would love for that to go through. So I know, at least as the superintendent's association, I don't, I, I think I shared with the committee, I've been able to rejoin the superintendent's association legislative committee. We have a meeting, I believe, next week. It is one of our legislative priorities to try to get an increase in the reimbursement for circuit breaker. It's currently capped at 75%. I don't know if MASC is joining on with that pledge. If not, then it would be a great thing for them to join on to as well. Because the, and I would, and, you know, this is a little sort of inside baseball for how this works. The benefit of money going into circuit breakers opposed to Chapter 70 is circuit breaker funds flow directly from the state to the school district, as opposed to Chapter 70 funds that flow from the state to the town coffers and then get distributed through sort of that mechanism, right? So because they are reimbursement costs directly to offset costs incurred by the district, from our perspective, at least as superintendent, so I would imagine from the school committee's perspective, it's a much better way to ensure that the reimbursement funds for extraordinary costs go directly to offset those extraordinary costs. So our advocacy is to try to give it up to 90%. I don't know if that is, you know, going to happen at any point in the future. But anybody that's listening that would like to join in that cause, we'd be happy to have your support. So.
Thank you. Thanks.
So the other things on this revenue slide, user fees. So we, the school committee voted on this for preschool tuition back in December. What this budget does, I know there were some significant increases to fees that were contemplated and voted last year. This was asked for a number of years of not changing fees at all. In order to avoid that shock to the system and to the pocketbook for families, is to put a, propose modest increase of 3% on an annual basis. This allows us to be responsive to inflationary costs, not hit families all at once. And so that's contemplated as part of this year's budget as well. And then I had addressed the solar revenue offset previously.
Can I ask, this is not related necessarily to our operating budget, but extended day? I know that's the revolving credit, or the revolving line. Are we doing anything there for increasing those fees? Because similar to the preschool tuition to the bus fees, we went through a period of never increasing and then tried to do a massive increase. And I'd love to avoid that, and, but at the same time, we do need to keep up with the costs.
Yeah, so I, the way that, we actually had a conversation even earlier this morning, right? I think, given the conversation in the community around extended day, it would be irresponsible for us to have a conversation about rates without simultaneously having the conversation about registration. So the plan is to have that on the agenda for the February meeting of the committee.
Okay.
And so we'll talk about that more at that point.
Okay. Thanks.
Moving from operating to capital, we'll take a few minutes to talk about capital budget. This is the, the overall FY25 capital budget is level funded at one, just over $1 million from FY24. What we have done, I didn't put like the five-year chart in here, but we've shifted some of the numbers around. We've increased the amount in roofing. And part of that is relating to the fact that we're going to be expending those funds for the Sheehan project. And so we want to try to build the coffers back up and roofing. In technology, we do have a replacement cycle. We need to do, as a, as a one-to-one district. This year's technology will help support the replacement of Chromebooks for students in grade six and nine, new MacBooks for high school teachers, and we have a three-and-a-half year refresh cycle for Chromebooks, and a five-year cycle for teacher laptops. For FF and E, we do have a regular replacement cycle. With the opening of Pine Hill, it allows for investment of other buildings. And I will say, on top of that, what we will be doing is anything that is in the Hanlon School that can be repurposed for use in other buildings, we'll be doing that as well, too. I can think particularly, and I'm looking out at Deb out in the hallway, or out in the hallway, out in the audience, we didn't put you out in the hallway, my apologies for that. We had lost, with the loss of the art room at Downey, we had lost art furniture. So our hope would be to potentially be able to repurpose some of that to bring over to Downey, as with WABA moving out, we can bring an art classroom back at Downey for next year. And so we need furniture to be able to do that, right? So there's, there's an opportunity. And Deb, for those that can't hear, just said, we need furniture. So we're going to, and I would say, there is no more valuable commodity in an elementary school than kidney tables. And so we'll also be repurposing those from, right? So that doesn't hit the operating budget, that doesn't hit the capital budget. It's about how we reuse the resources that we have, knowing that new furniture is coming into Pine Hill. Around building improvements in HVAC, so we recently conducted a conditions assessment of mechanical, fire, and electrical systems. There is some recommended equipment replacement upgrades for fire and electrical panels, HVAC units, chillers. So that's what that budget is allocated for. About roofing, we've had a lot of conversation around roofing. There was a moisture study done last year. There's a prioritization of the Sheehan non-slope roof that will essentially use the funds that we have in our roofing reserve. That's why we've asked, why we've reallocated more funds in the FY25 capital ask, is to try to build that reserve back up for future needs. On top of that, there is a restoration product, project needed at the high school to extend the life by another 30 years for the high school roof. It's an estimated current cost of $2.5 million that we've requested through a town meeting borrowing article outside of the annual capital ask. It's just, you know, I think that while certainly we are, the community has invested in Pine Hill, and we're having conversations, and I'm just going to go, you know, I'll talk about our future priorities in a second, about the comprehensive facility study, which we know there are significant needs at Sheehan and at Thurston. We also need to make sure that we maintain the investment in the existing buildings we have. The high school here is over 20 years old. And if we don't address the needs of this building, we don't want it to be in a place where we need to do something that is, we want to keep up with the maintenance that is required for a 20-year-old building, and that requires a roof restoration project. So be looking to put that forward. In terms of comparisons and future priorities, I know we've done this chart in the past. This is Boston Magazine's top public high schools for 2023 and the districts that are in there. You can see that we are right around in the middle-ish of that list. We are actually, if you look at the numbers from median to median, slightly below the median cost and mean cost for cost per pupil in those districts. And so that's where we stand on that front. And in terms of future priorities, and these are identified and expanded upon a little bit more in the budget documents, it continues to be, and this is the one identified priority from last year that we weren't able to do anything with, and it's not a question of will from money, it's a question of space. And it's the creation of additional preschool classrooms. We just literally do not have the space to be able to do that right now. There are also priorities around high school wellness teacher. I would say that would be top of the list there in terms of, in terms of that. Elementary health teachers. There is a need when we think about how we, one of the things I identified in the, in this entry plan was the need to develop and identify those tiered systems of supports for students. That requires having a really robust data system. And so the need to have a district data analyst to look not just at that, but a whole slew of data in the district is a, is a future priority for us. ELL teachers, as we respond to the, you know, we actually did a post-budget out of a .1 in ELL in this year's budget that is, carries forward into FY25. But we may need to be responsive to increasing trends that we're seeing in students that require English language services, as well as future priorities for science and school career council positions at the high school. I will say that beyond this list, which may or may not maintain, or may be modified, the fact that we're going to be going to developing a new district vision and strategic plan, that will be the primary driver for future asks, right? I talked about, in this year's budget, we added these things consistent with our district strategy. Strategy drives decision-making in a district and drives budgetary priorities. We are coming up on the end of the current strategic plan. I'm happy that we are able to do through this cycle most of those things. And again, with the exception of the preschool classroom, which is limited by space, but that we were able to, you know, kind of put a bow on a lot of those things that we identified in the current strategic plan. But it's now, how do we move forward in the strategic planning process, and how will that inform our future budget cycles? As well as on the capital side, the new master facilities plan, right? So both of those go, go hand in hand as we think about operating and capital needs in the future. So with that being said, the next steps, the public budget hearing will be here on February 8. We're working through the scheduling of finance committee presentations and budget hearings, and then the annual town meeting on May 6. So with that, I will stop talking for a minute and let, let the committee respond with questions or comments, or whatever you have to say.
I think a lot of my questions were answered as we went along. I will say that I, I think this is actually a great budget. I really see the priorities shining through through this and driving this, which I think is a testament to this team. And I don't know, I think, I'm, I'm, you know, given the current climate, the economic climate uncertainty and inflation, I think that this, this looks really good.
Thank you for that. And I am completely remiss in not thanking all the members of my team at the forefront of starting this. So to Allison, and Lema, and Steve, and Latifah, and Sue in my office, to all the members of admin council, those that are here and those that are not here. This is an effort from everybody. This is a team effort. And so while I'm the one who's been doing most of the talking, it is really, it, it comes from the people on the team who are just phenomenal. So.
Other questions, comments?
I just think it's so impressive that you're able to add a director of HR and bump up the mental health supports and still come in at the percentage ask that we are. So I think.
At lower than level services.
Lower than level, yeah. I think that's really great. And thank you to everybody for their hard work.
The town people appreciate it.
Other questions, comments?
I think I asked enough throughout. Good job.
What a question and one comment. And I always look at Lemah's. So the question I've asked before, and I know Worcester's done some stuff, it's around, we spend 2.8 million, if I have it, between yellow buses and bed busing, right, transportation. And I know, like, Worcester's actually, I know we're a small district. I'm just putting it out there, it's a lot of money, things, and I know Worcester just in-sourced their yellow buses. I'm not saying we should, I'm just saying that it continues to strike me how big a number that is, and if there's anything we can do, you know, I know there's contraction. I'm just, I'm just
I will say, it's not easy to get bus drivers.
No, I understand.
You know, in the universe where we are, where we're struggling
Fair enough.
With staff, I mean, it's hard to imagine that. But I do, I mean, we are, our yellow bus contract, we are in the final third year of that contract, and we have option years going forward. So this, FY '25 will be the third year.
Yeah.
This is what we're budgeting for, and then we have two option years. So we have an opportunity to consider whether to go out to bid again
Okay.
Or to think differently. We also, I think FY '26 is the final year on the van contract. So that will be the year to also evaluate whether we want to reconsider our vendor, look out at the market, see how other districts are doing this. There are some districts that have talked about partnerships, and thinking about whether that allows them to leverage a little bit more market power as they're seeking van transportation, but I think there's work to be done on that.
Yeah, okay, fair enough.
Yeah, I, I'll just, I mean, this is a significant statewide issue. I mean, there's a Transportation Commission, the, a school Transportation Commission that had some reports a couple of years ago. We are in a climate where the consolidation of companies has led to a really non-competitive bidding climate, unfortunately. And so we're going to continue to pursue whatever opportunities we have, but.
Okay.
There is an interesting, there's a, a working group that is looking at electrification of buses, and Westwood has entered into this, like, grant to support that working group. So they've just started to meet this spring. I'll start to attend those meetings. That's an intriguing prospect also. It, it's hard to achieve, and part of why it's a working group of multiple districts is because those districts also have contracted bus providers and are looking to see how can they electrify their fleet through the way that they go out to bid, and, you know, incentivize the vendors to supply electric buses rather than gas. So that's another interesting thing that we're looking at as we think about our contract going forward.
Yeah, and the other, the other more comment, so this is great, great work. It was, it's just more, as we think about, to your point around strategy drives decision-making, I think identifying, we always have, we have the strategy, say, here's 3.12, here's all these things we do. But I think we also going to have, we actually have to identify what we can't do. In other words, there's going to have to be trade-offs, and a good strategy makes that. And I don't think new growth in this town is kind of flatlining a little bit. You know, we have, we took advantage of Pine Hill this year, it's a one-time thing you can do. So we're going to, you know, not to be, to be down, we're going to have to, like, make those trade-off decisions, I think, in the future, so.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that, right? I mean, we, we not just, we benefited from not just the Pine Hill consolidation, but also the special ed
Right.
Tuition impact of this year, right? And so I, I do have, you know, early concerns about what FY, and I think I've expressed these to each of you individually. I do have some early concerns about what FY '26 may bring. You know, absent, you know, as you talked about, like, flatlining new growth, right? I mean, we are, we are bound by Prop 2.5. And so we need to, budgets are about, are all about choices. And we've been able, in this year's budget, to positively impact a lot of good choices. But sometimes choices are about making the best of a bunch of bad choices. And so that, that, I, I feel like it's been a really positive thing. On a negative note, but I also just want to temper expectations as we move forward, too, so.
I thought of a question. Chapter 70.
Yeah.
When is that number coming out? It should be soon, February, right? Early February?
That's a, that's a good question. It, sometime in February? Yeah.
Well, last year it was February, but remember, more
Early, it was because of her grace period.
She had a grace period, she doesn't have that this year.
Yeah.
And what have we budgeted there? I mean, clearly, we didn't base it on last year.
No, and, and, you know, again, just sort of be, to talk about the, and this goes back to the previous conversation we had around Circuit Breaker, right?
Right.
Chapter 70 doesn't come directly into the school department, it comes into the town coffers that are ultimately, you know, the distribution to school department, to police, to fire, to DPW, to everybody else, is done through the consolidation of Chapter 70 plus tax base, plus receipts, plus all the rest of that. And the Chapter 70 formula dictates the minimum net school spending that a district is obligated to require. We, if we did that, we would be nowhere near the district that we are, right? So we, as just about every district in the Commonwealth does, we spend. So in terms of the, there's not necessarily a direct correlation between anticipated Chapter 70 revenues and what we produce in the operating side. So I can't speak at this exact moment in time as to what assumptions the town is making with their overall budget related to Chapter 70, what their anticipated Chapter 70 revenue is. And I think the fact that we saw a significant increase last year was, it was the benefit of two things, one that hopefully is recurring, and another one that I know is definitely not recurring, right? The one that is recurring is the continued implementation of the Student Opportunity Act. So that was originally a seven-year implementation phase because of COVID, that got put down to six years, but the legislature has committed to implementing that in sort of a one-sixth basis over the course of six years. So I, I hope and expect that there will be some continued movement towards that. At the same time, we all, because that is based upon demographic formulas, based upon student enrollment and other demographic trends, we also benefited in last year's Chapter 70 receipts from the expansion of the Medco program into the elementary schools. That is not a replicable event in Chapter 70 formula calculations. So I think one of the things that we, we also need to be conscious of in this conversation is when we think about the implications of Prop 2.5, if we were trying to spend the max with Chapter 70 and what we anticipated in this year's budget, that creates less of a buffer potentially in FY '26 with Prop 2.5, when we know things might be a little bit tighter. So I think there is a responsibility to be a little more conservative in estimating in FY '25, when we have some flexibilities from savings that there might be in subsequent, knowing that, that we have the need to, that we're going to anticipate in FY '26. So I really, the short answer to your question is, no, I don't have a straight answer.
Right.
The long answer is the long answer I just gave.
But if we're conservative in '25, when you say conservative, do you mean conservative school budget v. town budget? Or, meaning, if we're conservative on the school side, the balance would just go to the town? I don't see how that would, that would benefit us in '26.
Yeah, what it, what it does is if the town is similarly being conservative in their estimates and the receipts come in higher, right, you then have a gap in the levy limit that you're spending in FY '25, that creates an additional buffer for you in FY '26.
So it's a two-pronged
It's a two-pronged approach.
Conservation.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you.
Anything else on the budget? Thank you.
No, thank you. No, and thank you all for, for your input, your questions, and, and again, thank you to the team for all of your work as well.
So there was one other item, there's the Tech Capital Reserve Fund.
Oh, yeah.
Our good friend, the executive director, is looking to spend some more money?
Well, the executive director is not necessarily looking to spend more money. I haven't heard that. But this is looking to have the ability to use the funds with more fluidity in the future. So, you know, I sit on the, on the, the board of TechNow, and what you have is a memo from, from Emily Parks as the Executive Director of Tech, looking for a modification of the Tech Capital Reserve Fund. What this would do, it would amend the terms of the fund that would allow it to both use the funds, not, right now, the way that the Capital Reserve was established was very prescriptive in just about one building. It didn't provide flexibility for how capital funds could be used in the future. So this would open up flexibilities to either renovate and upgrade an existing, an existing facility, potentially purchase a facility, provide funding for leases and common area maintenance, purchase of capital equipment. It's a much better way to kind of talk about how that would be done. It would also request a limit increase of that fund from $750,000 to 3.5 million. It would not be funded at 3.5 million immediately, but again, provides flexibility for future growth in tech. This does not require a vote of the committee, unless the committee doesn't want to do it, and then it requires a vote in the negative. I mean, this was recommended unanimously by the Tech Board. It certainly comes with my recommendation as a member of the Tech Board, but I also have a legal obligation to present it to the committee in session, for it to be discussed in, in public session, and then just get direction from you to either do nothing and say it's fine, or whatever other action you may choose to take.
Any questions or comments?
No, thank you so much, and I will convey that to Emily tomorrow morning.
All right, great, thank you. All right, we'll move on to action items. First action item is approval of December 14th, 2023 meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second, second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? None? Unanimous. The next is approval of the robotics field trips. I think there's a memo that describes those. Do I have a motion to approve the robotics field trips?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Unanimous. Next was approval of the Mandarin field trip. Again, there's a memo that describes what that is. Do I have a motion to approve the Mandarin field trip?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.